The Village Board Meeting, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, to order. And we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, clerk call roll, please.
Hewitt.
Here.
Anastasio.
Here.
Eastman.
Here.
Washburn.
Here.
DeGroot.
He's here. So the first thing that we have is a, just a quick public hearing. It's our statutory requirement to have this when we make ordinance changes and such things, impact fee study. The purpose of this particular hearing is to hear any and all parties, their attorneys or agents, or who are for or against an amendment to the village's existing ordinances imposing public facility impact fees under section sixty-six dot zero six one seven of the Wisconsin statutes. The proposed impact fees will be collected and used to pay for the proportionate share of the capital costs for new, improved, or expanded law enforcement facilities, fire and rescue facilities, transportation facilities, park facilities, and stormwater facilities required to serve the new land development in the village. So if, for those wishing to speak, please fill out a public hearing slip, which you'll find on the table near the entrance. Once recognized, speakers may come to the podium and identify themselves with their name and address. Please speak clearly into the microphone. I will first call people in favor of the application and then call those who are opposed. Speakers must direct all discussions towards the board. I will not allow interchange between members of the audience and the petitioner. We request that you do not interfere with nor interject comments while another person has the floor. Please keep all comments on the particular item before the board and no longer than five minutes. If a spokesperson represents a large group of people, I will allow that representative up to fifteen minutes. And finally, please turn off and mute all electronic devices. So regarding the item that's before us. Mr. Schultz.
I've been kind of the main person working on this with John Cameron with Ellers. So he's got kind of the whole report ready. In the grand scheme of things, the total impact fees are not changing a whole lot. I know the fire impact fees went down and we did increase. Transportation. But I mean, John Cameron is here. If we could just maybe go over some of the high points?
I think we're good.
I believe that Mr. Cameron was here at the, at the Committee of the Whole meeting a couple of weeks back. He is. Not that we don't like Mr. Cameron, but the changes that we made, if any, were minor. And I think that, I think we're fine. So at this point, I need to open up the public part of the public hearing. I have not received any input, any, nobody has signed up wishing to speak. So inasmuch as I'm opening this to public comment, there is nobody here who wishes to speak. So in pretty much the same breath, I think that we can close public comment and we've satisfied our statutory requirement. So we'll close the public hearing part of that. If it's all right with the board, we have trustee that's going to need to leave shortly. I'd like to move some, some board business up to the top of the, to the agenda. If we could jump to item C one, finance, legal, and licensing, we've got discussion and possible action on resolution one dash twenty-two, authorizing issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed twenty-one million dollars note anticipation note, series twenty-two A.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve resolution one dash twenty-two, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of series twenty-two A notes not to exceed twenty-one million dollars as presented.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second, and we're visited tonight by Mr. Todd Taves of Ellers.
Thank you. So back in twenty eighteen, for those that recall were on the board, we intentionally did not borrow the full amount needed for the original TID five projects. And the reason was, is they were estimates. We wanted to get closer to the end of the project when we knew final costs. So this is now that cleanup borrowing, if you will. These proceeds will finance the completion of the water system in TID five, as well as the Enterprise Way extension for Ashley Capital, and then also an extension of a sewer on Louis Sorensen. So this is considered interim financing. It will have a single bullet maturity due in the year twenty-twenty-seven. So in other words, we will have to refinance it. And that refinancing bond is ultimately the security for these bonds. So it is not considered a general obligation per se, but we are agreeing to reserve twenty, up to twenty-one million dollars in geo-debt capacity for that eventual refunding bond. If we treat that as if it were geo-debt in place at the moment, you would be at twenty-six point six percent of your statutory borrowing limit, with the ability to borrow up to an additional one hundred and sixty-five million in total. With the pre-sale report we included in your packet, these are estimated rates. As you might know, the market has been moving in different directions fairly significantly since the beginning of the year. But based on that estimate, we had interest rates assumed of two point five seven percent. The actual rate will be determined through a negotiated public offering next Thursday. We will negotiate the rates with the underwriter Baird on your behalf. And the award will be either by Maureen or Mike by a, an approving certificate. So what you're doing this evening is simply authorizing us to move forward, to negotiate those rates, and to delegate staff the final award authority.
Thank you. Because we have done through this before, I'm assuming that there aren't any questions, unless there are.
No, I just, I appreciate your trying to help my need to leave. But I, one of the things that I think is very important about this, we have talked about it now for a long time. It is part of previous discussions over how TID five would be completed. We don't come close to jeopardizing our borrowing ability. We still have plenty of room. It's well thought out, and the idea is even as we see TID five continue to perform, that we won't need to use all of it potentially, or need to pay the interest out, all out of cash. So I think it's a great thing for us to get, again, keeping TID five closed up and cleaned up, and making sure it's properly funded, and we are not jeopardizing ourselves, I think, between Corals and Brady. And Ellers, they have been more than efficient in providing us good information and making us feel comfortable in making this decision. So I support it.
That is a good point that trustee Washburn brings up. And not to put you on the spot or anything, Todd, but you know, there's, there's always consternation when you borrow, and you know, there's, sometimes there's scuttlebutt that, you know, we're borrowed out, and that we, that we don't have the room or the financial heft to be able to authorize future borrowing. And you know, where are we at on that, on that continuum?
So you're, you've used just over one quarter of your geo-borrowing authority. So in other words, you've got tremendous flexibility. The other thing to remember is that even though the security for this financing is eventual geo-refunding bond, the expectation and intent is that the debt service will be fully paid by TID number five. So you know, the taxpayers in this particular case will not end up paying the debt service since it will be abated with TID number five increment.
Again, even more compelling.
Thank you, Todd. So the motion is in front of us regarding resolution one dash twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Anastasio.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number two, discussion possible action to approve ordinance five dash twenty-two, amending chapter thirty of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to impact fees.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve ordinance five dash twenty-two, amending chapter thirty of the Code, Code of Ordinances pertaining to impact fees.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second. Again, this is something that was brought up to us at the, at the Committee of the Whole. And we just finished a public hearing regarding said item as well. So unless there are any thoughts or questions from the board, I'll call that vote as well. Not hearing anything, roll call on ordinance five dash twenty-two.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Anastasio.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
Washburn.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. Motion carries. Trustee Washburn asked to be excused at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
We will do just that.
Thank you.
And then from here, we can go back up to the top of the, of the agenda, and we move on to the twenty-twenty-one year-end presentation, Racine County Economic Development Corporation.
Do you want to do pub, public comment?
That's after.
Oh, I'm sorry. After the president.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Brown. I'm with the Racine County Economic Development Corporation. I appreciate the time and letting us come here and speak and talk about some of our activities in twenty-twenty-one. RCEDC is the lead economic development agency inside of Racine County, and our mission is to increase the tax base and promote job growth throughout the county and within the village of Mount Pleasant. I want to report out on activities and how they are associated with our strategic plan and the five key aspects of it. Business retention and expansion, business recruitment, talent, community development, as well as leadership. So again, briefly go over our twenty-twenty-one year-end results. And as you can see, in our business expansion goals and results for twenty-twenty-one, we've assisted ninety-five businesses throughout the county. This was the second straight year of record-setting loan act, loan and grant activity. We've also been trying to be very proactive with our outreach. So we were able to reach out to four hundred and seventy-two different contacts. This was in response to COVID nineteen and the impacts related on businesses. We wanted to make sure that we understood the challenges that were faced by businesses throughout Racine County and the village of Mount Pleasant, and be able to try to help them overcome any of these challenges that they were facing. Another aspect is the technical assists. This is more reactive. So this would be when somebody would come to us with a question about either data, programs, or referrals. We had seventeen of these in the village of Mount Pleasant. And this increased, that we, this increase in activity to two hundred and ninety-eight technical assists was also primarily due to COVID nineteen impacts to businesses and residents. As far as our loans and grants go and incentives, we had about three million dollars' worth of loans and grants and incentives throughout the county. Some of these, this is a little bit lower than we projected for the year, but I think a lot of that had to deal with the hesitancy of moving forward on projects due to the environment with COVID nineteen and other macro and microeconomic trends. But we were very successful with our SBA five oh four loans. RCEDC has a finance division known as Business Lending Partners, and we are one of two organizations throughout the state of Wisconsin that does SBA five oh four loans. This year was an outrageous year with twenty, almost twenty-seven million dollars' worth of SBA loans, and this is, this is another record increase in loans. Moving on to recruitment and expansion, we've tried aggressively to reach out to the real estate community and site selectors throughout the nation. We had one hundred and fifty-six unique touches to sites, to the real estate community. This was a little bit lower than our very ambitious goal of one hundred and ninety-eight. This was, the challenge regarding this was that a lot of the in-person events that I would normally attend tend to be canceled or postponed, but we were still able to make the one hundred and fifty-six contacts. Another aspect was recruitment of businesses to area business parks. We had three this year, but some of the projects that we've had were shelved and moved slower than we expected, and we've already seen some of those come in as successes already in twenty-twenty-two. We also wanted to work with recruiting and developing residential projects. A very successful one that we like to highlight would be the fiduciary project in the village of Mount Pleasant. As we're finding that more and more businesses are needing places for their, for their employees to work and live, and we're trying to accommodate this need as best we can. In addition to all of this, too, we've also done a direct marketing campaign to about five hundred different businesses, and I'm sorry, not businesses, site selectors and real estate professionals throughout the entire nation. So we're trying to focus even on a broader scope than just regionally or even in the Midwest. And I also want to say that one other program, and I forgot to mention this earlier, was that we established a limited opportunity grant program in twenty-twenty-one. So this is known as the CDBGCV. And so it's a mouthful, but this is also to support businesses impacted by the pandemic. And with that, I want to turn it over to Laura Millian, which will finish up the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. So continuing on in terms of our highlights, talent, Jordan mentioned that we talked to lots of businesses in twenty-twenty-one, and talent continues to be a significant issue for our businesses. So we're pleased that one of our tenants for our strategic plan is talent attraction. In twenty-twenty-one, you know, the focus really was on being able to share that story of why Racine County is a great place to explore, live, and work. And through our greaterracincounty.com website, we're pleased to work with the Mount Pleasant Tourism Commission to be able to do a digital outreach campaign to northern Illinois. And we reached three, three point six million impressions with that campaign, so pleased to be able to, to reach that threshold. Another benefit of that campaign and working with the Mount Pleasant Tourism Commission is we actually developed a partnership with a consortium of manufacturers to do a digital outreach campaign that was specifically focused on attracting manufacturing talent. This is going to be an ongoing effort to raise awareness about Racine County and what we have to offer. The next area is engagement of, with our employers and specifically our HR professionals, making sure that they know what tools are available. So we reached out to forty different businesses. We probably actually had more engagement than that, but forty was, was where we, we were able to meet that goal. We also continue to share what we find in our conversations with businesses with our partners, so with Gateway Technical College, UW Parkside, and others, to make sure that they are aware of what, what our businesses are saying so they can inform their, their programming. And then lastly, our job board, which is a part of greaterracincounty.com, has one hundred and fourteen profiles. Nineteen of those are Mount Pleasant businesses and had four hundred and forty jobs posted on average. The next area of focus for our strategic plan is our community development area. This is really driven by the needs of our communities that we work with. We have eight different contract communities. One of the areas of focus for twenty-twenty-one was actually doing some audits of the different websites for our communities and providing some feedback on areas of improvement, so we could better call out economic development resources. And the last area here is around just expanding our messaging to include tourism for our Greater Racine County effort. So widening it to include explore, live, and work to be able to capture the importance of tourism and visitor-centric activity for economic development. The last area for our strategic plan is really internally focused on making sure that RCEDC continues to be a leader in economic development for our community, and it is a solid organization. So that includes reviewing our programs on a regular basis, making sure that we are recruiting and retaining our talent, so providing professional development for our staff, making sure that we've got a variety of sources to continue our organization in terms of attracting private contributions, and also making sure that our organization looks like our, the community in which we serve, so looking to diversify and fill some vacant positions on whether it's our board, our leadership council, our committees, in terms of making sure they're diverse in terms of ethnicity, age, and also gender. The last thing I want to highlight, that's sort of outside of the scope of year-end activities, but just want to make sure that the board is aware, and anyone who might be watching this, is aware of these two specific grant opportunities. Jordan mentioned the Racine County CDBGCV program. This is a program that was launched in twenty-twenty-one, really is being implemented in twenty-twenty-two. It is open to businesses that are outside of, that are in Racine County that are outside of the city of Racine, because the city of Racine actually has their own community development block grant program allocation, but this allocation is for Racine County. It's for businesses with less than five employees, up to twelve thousand dollars, and grants are available if the businesses meet low to moderate income requirements. Information's available on RCEDC's website about that, and we want to make sure that businesses are aware of that program. And then lastly is the Wisconsin Main Street Bounce Back Grant Program. It's a ten thousand dollar grant available from Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. It's open for businesses that are going into formerly vacant commercial spaces. That grant is available through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. Grant applications and more information can be found on WEDC's website or through RCEDC's website, rcedc.org. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments from the board.
Questions, comments, Mr. Hewitt.
Laura and Jordan, touching before a little bit on talent attraction and everything that you kind of had listed on here. Last Tuesday, the eighth, was a wonderful program, seven-thirty to eight-thirty beyond meeting. RCEDC, as a member of the Leadership Council, I zoomed that with pleasure. It was really, really interesting to see how Rebecca Kowalski and the VP of Manpower and everything, and primarily, they were talking about a couple of areas that they're talking about, different businesses and everything. And then, too, attracting people and how hard they're working to do that, and then too, maybe you want to extend on me. And I sat through the whole, whole video or Zoom, and I made a lot of notes and, and then too, but please touch.
Right. So I appreciate you, you sharing that. So that, that Zoom video is available through RCEDC's website, so if anybody wants to go back and watch it. But we had, Manpower Group was able to share sort of the trends they're seeing overall, which was helpful. And then we had a panel, Andis and Lavelle, so Lavelle's on the west end of the community, be able to share their perspective of what they're doing to attract and retain workers. And we had almost a hundred individuals on that call. So that just is a testament to how important this issue is. I know the village is certainly looking to attract employees. Culture has a lot to do with it. You have to be creative. Those were the main, you know, takeaways, but we also have to be, do a good job of telling the story of Racine County to our existing individuals who live here, as well as those outside, to be able to sell the assets and be able to attract new, new individuals to the community to work for our businesses. But it's definitely a need that, that we'll continue to focus on.
Laura and Jordan both, you know, we appreciate your, your annual update. And, you know, going forward, it's, it's been a tremendous partnership that we've had working with you, and we certainly look forward to that as well going forward.
All right. Thank you.
So let's, let's move on to public comment. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments on any matter. Please listen for the president to recognize you. State your name and address for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes. I have no paperwork signed for anybody wishing to speak publicly. So I think in the same breath that we open public comment, we can close public comment, and we'll move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. Trustee Hewitt.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So that motion carries. So since we took care of under finance, legal, and license, item number one, number two, let's move on to number three, which is discussion possible. possible action to enter into a settlement agreement pertaining to Racine County case number 2020 CV1120, which is Daniel Brown and others versus the village of Mount Pleasant.
Mr. President, I make a motion to enter into a settle agreement pertaining to Racine County case number 2020 CV1120, Daniel Brown et al. versus village of Mount Pleasant.
Second.
So I hear a motion and a second. This is something that we discussed in closed session at the, at the Cow Meeting. So there's, there's a motion in front to accept this settlement. And Claude, if you'd like to just kind of fill us in on the details.
So again, this is a relocation settlement that we're entering into tonight. Brown's owns some property along Ninety Street as well as at Butterdon KR. So again, they have up to two years to challenge any relocation benefits. And that's what they challenged. And again, we went through mediation and we settled at $56,000 on their relocation benefits over and above what they were already given. Our attorney believes this is a good settlement. It's a good deal for everyone. So we entertain you to approve it.
Any final thoughts or questions for Claude? I'm not hearing any. In the matter of the, of the settlement agreement, we'll do a roll call.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Anastasio.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. Motion carries. Community development, we've got discussion possible action on the 2022 Racine County Economic Development Corporation contract.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the 2022 Racine County Economic Development Corporation contract, better known as RCEDC.
Second.
So I hear a motion and a second. This is something, you know, what we just heard from, from RCEDC. And, you know, this was also discussed at the, at the Committee of the Hole. Anything that you wanted to add?
Sam.
The contract amount is $125,600. Jordan was there to present it at the last committee of the whole meeting. Can answer any final questions, but we continue to value their
Any other, any other thoughts?
Well, I'm very impressed with the work of RCEDC, and I'm glad that we have them and in our corner, so to speak, and look forward to working with them in the future.
And I would echo that. Our partnership with RCEDC is, is one of those things that works particularly well. And I know that throughout the, the Greater Racine County community, our, our peer communities, Caldonia, Sturtevant, and others, you know, certainly feel the same way. So we're looking forward, provided that this vote passes, continuing our partnership. So in the matter of the RCEDC contract, roll call, please.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Anastasio.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. Motion carries. You got your contract extension. Thank you again, Jordan and Laura. Okay. So let's move on to, we've got some personnel issues. We've got discussion possible action related to retirement agreement with the Public Works Highway Manager.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve a retirement agreement with the Public Works Highway Manager.
Second.
So I hear a motion and a second. Tony, is this something that you would like to speak to?
Sure, briefly. Again, this was discussed in closed session at the last, the previous Cow Meeting. This is an agreement between the village and the current Public Works Highway Manager, Mark Benish. And in a nutshell, it allows him to retire under the previous personnel manual before it was changed recently, where he can use his accrued sick time to continue to pay his health insurance for his family.
Sounds good.
All right. Roll call.
Hewitt.
Aye.
Anastasio.
Aye.
Eastman.
Aye.
DeGroot.
Aye. Motion carries. Reports, I don't see anything here except for item seven, announcements, recognition of village residents, employees, memorials, and non-political community events. What do you have, anything good for the cause? I, I have one thing. I'd like to provide a shout out to retired Green Bay Packer Leroy Butler for.
Oh, yeah.
For his selection to the Hall of Fame. What made this particularly cool is the Journal Times article that was written and followed this to a great extent. Mount Pleasant was duly noted in that because Mr. Butler's in-laws live in our fine village.
I have seen him. Seen him personally several times at the Pick and Save at Spring '31.
Claude has an item.
And, you know, I heard from many as, as I was at Pick and Save and other places, well, Woodson was here. You know, why didn't we have an event? And well, it wasn't, it wasn't about having an event. It was about to honor Leroy. And I just, I just think it was a cool story. So congratulations, Leroy, on being in the Hall of Fame. Well-deserved too long in coming. One last motion.
Hold on.
Move for adjournment.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry. I just want to just remind everyone, we're still working on it, but please have your calendars marked out for February 22nd at 5:00 PM at the county for a special Cow Meeting. So we're still working out the details. We'll have it finalized later this week, but please mark your calendars.
You had previously said that was going to be an open, public meeting.
Correct. It'll just be a Cow Meeting at Ice Grove. Okay? 5 o'clock on the 22nd. Thank you.
One last motion.
Move for adjournment.
I hear a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.